Please stand up and please leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Baldwin?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Griswold?
Here.
Counselor Reese-Kant?
Here.
And Counselor Scott?
Here.
Thank you. And first off, are there any corrections or additions to the city council events from the special need January 29th, 2013, or the regular session February 13th, 2013? Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, a miniature approve. Consent calendar. Any additions or corrections on the consent calendar? We have the agenda, the appointments of the budget committee, the planning commission, the approval of the Fifth Street reservoir replacement project, the easement and award minutes from the bike pedestrian committee, library advisory committee, planning commission, and the senior center advisory board. Any corrections or additions? Okay. The consent calendar is passed, approved? Okay. Yes. Okay, well, last is a proclamation. It is April 11th. Okay, we got a proclamation declaring April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas National Child Abuse Prevention Month began in 1983 as part of a presidential proclamation to raise awareness of the alarming rate in which children were being abused and neglected. And whereas this month of awareness has since become an annual event reaffirmed by each succeeding president, and whereas every child deserves to grow up in a healthy, safe, nurturing environment. And whereas child abuse and neglect causes psychological, emotional, and physical harm which can create lifelong problems for victims of abuse, and whereas child abuse and neglect impacts our entire society and our society's future, and whereas parents, families, and communities can help reduce child abuse and neglect by recognizing that prevention starts with each of us, and whereas the Lebanon Police Department and the Lebanon communities that care are encouraging Lebanon businesses and citizens to turn the town blue by showing your support to stop the hurt. Display blue ribbons and lights at your home or business, or display blue pinwheels. Pinwheels represent a happy symbol of childhood during the month of April as part of the Ribbons Day, Ribbons by Day, Lights by Night campaign to create awareness of the need to prevent child abuse and neglect throughout Lebanon. And with that, I was speaking to Dayla, and they're going to put some lights on some of the trees in front of the Justice Center, which I thought was kind of neat. And I think the light guy in town is going to try and get some lights up in front of his house, too, so some blue lights to honor this proclamation. Very worthwhile. And next, we have citizen comments. And with citizen comments, before we have anybody step up, I wanted to explain, there was a little bit of an article, I believe, in the Lebanon Express today. We've changed our policy that we will respond during your five-minute comment period. You have five minutes to comment, and I'll read them to Lebanon. And we will have a back-and-forth conversation if it's necessary. If it runs over, we'll have two extra minutes to talk. And if need be, then we would have a city staff member talk, if that's necessary, or maybe at a different time. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphones, signing in, stating their name and address on the record. Each citizen's provided up to five minutes to provide comments for the council. The council will accept and distribute written comments as speakers request. This council welcomes all respectful citizens' comments regarding the city's business. Please refrain from making personal attacks. Speakers may offer objective criticism of city operations and programs, but this council does not hear complaints concerning the city personnel. You should direct all complaints involving city employees to the city manager of Lebanon. Is there anybody that would like to address council?
Hello, I've got my few set of names, Bill Solvin, Lebanon Carolina. Mayor Council, it's your first work session in February. I was polite, kept my mouth shut. But there was a gentleman that rides his bicycle complaining that he had to stop stop signs. And that's something that burns by puns, is these bicyclists, that they've got the rights that God almighty gives somebody. They don't have to stop, they don't have to do this, they don't have to do that. And if they get hurt, then it's on the vehicle's fault, or whatever, run over. And my second situation, with the reputation that the city has been making with themselves the last couple of years, are you going to be able to find a police chief? So we're going to have to eliminate some heads, so we can hire a police chief.
Okay, is that...
That's it.
That's your question? Okay.
I'd love to address here, I just read an article today about bicycles not stopping completely, treating a stop sign as a yield. And so I was reading the pros and cons. There are people that just hate a bike, trying to get away with anything, think, oh, bikes are evil, and you have a bike, and you want to be treated the same, and yet special. But one of the things that is unique to a bicycle situation coming up to a stop sign is that they have superior vision to somebody, visual awareness, and superior audio awareness of... And coming to a complete stop is less safe than just a very slow rolling stop, seeing that nobody's coming, and then continuing on through. It's actually a... It's a state law in Idaho, and there are several other states that are considering taking that.
Well, we're Oregon now.
I know. I'm just saying, I respectfully disagreeing with you. I think if you look at all of the facts, and I intend to look at all of the facts, and either, you know, support that one way or the other, I don't know that we can support anything different in Lebanon anyway. I don't know that Oregon law wouldn't supersede anything we decided to do. So, but I just wanted you to know that I...
You thought about their audible. I've seen them, you've seen them going down the road, and they've got their earphones on, listen to their music, or whatever, so that...
Sure, but they do have a superior advantage visually, so to come to a complete stop when it doesn't make sense, when I can just roll very, very slowly, and I can see, and it doesn't make sense for me to actually put my foot down and stop, and then restart. That mechanically is an awkward... It just doesn't make sense in a bicycling world. It's no safer. And so, so I respectfully disagree with you.
Okay, sir. When I pull up the stop sign, I see all directions, there's no traffic. Can I sneak through without stopping?
Are you walking or in a car?
I'm in a vehicle.
No, you have to come to the stop sign.
And the consequences in a vehicle are quite a bit different. The consequences in a vehicle of making a mistake are significantly different than the consequences of anything. The chances that you're going to make a mistake are much, much higher, and the consequences if you do are, the chances you're not going to see something down low where I will on a bike are just different, so...
I think the gentleman that spoke that week was also really referring to a safe crossing. That was one of his biggest concerns was, he may have said that about the stop signs, but I think he was really concerned about safer crossings. And that is what the Lebanon Trails is trying to address, is to make it a safer crossing. Some of them, where there's less distance, they have to cross the street better, you know, like we have downtown, we have a little bit more pedestrian-friendly. And I think that's what he was trying to refer to, just...
Yeah, I think he was trying to refer to, as he was planning bike routes through the city, he was, I think, suggesting, you know, pick routes that have fewer stop signs, because I think the really point he was making, he was saying, we don't want a stop on stop signs. You know, saying, you know, if we can pick the bicycle routes that make it convenient without a lot of stops, it'd be the best.
Well, and also, they should be paid for license fee or something. They want all these bike trails and all this center, and they don't want to pay for it.
Perhaps.
And as far as the chief of police, we have an acting chief of police right now, and we're going to leave that decision up to the new city manager. And we've signed the contract for the new city manager, and their timeline was about 90 days, but, but I mean, that's, you know, that might be a little bit...
A manager firm, not...
Firm, I'm sorry. Yeah, a search firm, to find the new city manager, and they've given us about 90 days, and, you know, give or take probably a few days on that. So it would be sometime, probably around summer before summer before the city manager would be here.
approximately. I remember we're going to have a new city manager?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bill, thanks for bringing the question.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, that's why this whole retired parts have nothing else to do.
Yeah.
Anybody else that would like to address city council?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. I'm here as the regional commissioner for the AYSO Soccer Club here in town tonight. Three years ago, we started a project out at Gila Lake, which, working with the city on that, to develop new soccer fields for the kids to have places to play out here. City council is very supportive of that, and I want to thank everybody for that. I know we've got some new councilors up here. Over the last three years, we've put in a lot of volunteer hours out there, had a lot of construction, a lot of things, a lot of development going on. And a year ago, we started playing out there. Our spring season is getting ready to start here this coming April. April 6th is our first game. We play every Saturday out there. We have currently little over 400 kids from the Lebanon area playing soccer, from four-year-olds all the way to 18-year-olds out there. And I wanted to come, thank the city council for that opportunity for us to build those fields, ask for your continued support with those fields. Last year, we applied for a grant, or the city applied for a grant to help us with some of the development stuff that needed to take place out there. Unfortunately, we didn't get the grant. And I wanted to personally invite every one of you out either April 6th, or any Saturday between April 6th and May 18th, to come out and enjoy, anytime, a great soccer. So the kids have a blast out there. Everybody really enjoys it, and, you know, it's a lot of fun to go out and see the kids enjoying it, having fun, everything. AYSO is 100% volunteer, so all our coaches, our referees, our board members, everybody volunteers their time, everybody that worked on that field volunteered their time, and how to do that, so I just wanted to personally invite everybody out to see the fruits of those labors and enjoy it.
It does, so how many games do they play, like on the weekend, on a day, like on a Saturday?
Each team plays seven games over the course of the season. We play in the fall, in September, October, and in the spring, in April and May. Any given day out there, our region, which is Albany, Lebanon, sweet home, we have 90 big teams. And here in Lebanon, I had to guess to say, I would say we probably play anywhere from 25 to 35 games out there every Saturday. We start at nine o'clock, and usually wrapped up around five, six.
I just think it's fantastic, you know, I work right on the road, and so when I'm at work, and on those Saturdays, or even the practice days, Saturday especially, you've never been down there. The amount of people, and games that are going on at one time, and they're packed in there, it's fantastic. It's a great use of a resource, and I just congratulate you on a mission finally coming for a mission.
Thank you. That's a good job. Here's a comment. Thank you, Desmond.
Thank you, Desmond.
Good evening. I'm Leva Darling, and for the night, I am representing the Lebanon Public Library Senior Center Trust. We have been in existence for quite some time, and our goal has been to see a senior center, a new senior center, and then a new library, and we've achieved those things. Now we've moved on to the Academy Square, and that's been our goal. And our current goal is to have a connecting sidewalk from one side of the square to the other side of the square. We've written many grants for that, and we continue to pursue that. However, during this recent economic downtime, it's been a bit of a challenge to get grants for that. However, we are excited to see that there are other community groups that are joining in on trying to improve Academy Square, and just make that a better place for our community. We're excited about that. We would like direction to know who should we communicate with so we have a coordinated effort for that facility. It was recently that we heard that there was another group that was looking at doing sidewalks in that Academy Square, and we do not want to be competing, we want to collaborate to all efforts we can, because, you know, we want to make the best of that resource. So as our committee met last week, we decided, since you guys were having a meeting, we would come and inquire, what is the best way, what is the group that is at Parks and Recs that's managing that? Where should we go to make sure that we're all on the same page?
Academy Square, by the way, welcome, Linda. I'm saying again, it's a little... Academy Square is, the plans for ultimately developing that are part of our Parks Master Plan. I don't think it's in much fleshed out in much detail, but the study that was done before, that was...
Yeah, a lot of time, yeah.
Yeah, the architectural plan, that was attached to the Parks Master Plan. So the Parks Master Plan is under the purview, or at least the over agency that deals with making recommendations to changes in the Parks Master Plan, is the Parks and Entry Committee. So I would certainly leave it under their auspices, and the staff coordination, which is in the Public Works Department, to continue to facilitate that process.
Okay. That was great. We wanted to confirm that that was still the appropriate place to go for that, and if we needed to file our plans of where, what efforts we're trying to facilitate, we would make sure that we have that, but we're ready to initiate that.
Is there any other citizen comments? Please slide in there, and state your name. Thank you, you can give it a little bit of explanation, but you have five minutes to get to address the council.
My name is James Thomas. Me and Jackson Baldwin actually had talked about it. I'm actually a former high school student, a freshman. And speaking as a former student, I've noticed that traffic at Airport and Fifth is slightly ridiculous. We, maybe we could get some new traffic control, like we talked about some crosswalk, or possibly some traffic signals, because I've noticed that about 3:00 PM is when high school gets out, or rush hour, about 5:00 to 6:00 PM, traffic is ridiculous. It's pulling out of Fifth Street and going out to Airport to get to Main Street or anywhere else, it takes forever. I just thought it might be a good idea if we maybe get some traffic, better traffic control out there.
So, James, thanks for coming, by the way. And Ron, would you mind?
No, not at all.
A quick briefing on what you need to talk to me about?
Um, to answer your question, we've done several traffic studies up there. And to put a traffic signal at Fifth and Airport would be, it's probably not a doable thing, based on the spacing and signals, it would most likely be Seventh and Airport, where the traffic signal would be. We're looking into possible flashing pedestrian crossings, but pedestrian crossings are going to help pedestrians, they're going to help with the traffic flow, but it's actually going to make the traffic flow probably a little bit worse if we do something like that. So, to answer your question, would you look at it? It doesn't meet warrants. You know, sometimes we can look at it hand, and perhaps it's still true.
From what kind, on the traffic say, what are the levels of service at that intersection?
Uh, during peak PM, about a D.
So it pushes the limits a little bit?
Yeah, it's still going to be any of the warrants, yeah, so...
And then Ron, just because we have some newer folks, would you mind defining the term warrants, because we're assuming there's nothing to do with Frank Stevenson.
Well, it could have to do with Frank. No, the warrants, basically, they look at eight different ones, and I don't have those with me, but they look at, you know, pedestrian issues, they look at stacking issues, they look at configuration of your intersection as a whole, that's just a few on the top, but I believe it's not even. So none of those warrants were met back in, oh, three, like, 2003. Could we do another study? Would it need warrants? It doesn't necessarily have to need warrants for the council to indicate that they want to go out and put a traffic signal, but that, that, that should really be to do that. I was cautioned doing it at Fifth, I would definitely look at Seventh Street intersection, because what the state did is they came in and fixed the Highway 20 signal by putting in a right-hand turn lane, because I don't remember a few years ago before that, the stacking back, I mean, it don't put it through the line. Well, I haven't been down there recently, but I don't think it does that many.
Much better. I used to drive it every day during rush hour, and I've seen it stacked clear back to the high school once or twice.
Right. And so, and what we've done is we've kind of adjusted our timing on the Second Airport signal, to accommodate that during the peak times. And the peak times, you know, in '03, they were, I'll say about three to five was the peak time. Now, has it increased? I mean, I'm not visually look at it and go, maybe, maybe not.
Seems like we, sorry, seems like we talked about that intersection last time we rolled through the transportation plan. And, because everything has an order of priority, obviously, with limited dollars, and it seems like, but it is identified as, in our master plan, as a kind of troubled area, isn't it? It's been years since I've gone through that document.
I don't know if that's in the TSB. I know the ODOT project was identified in TSB, where they put the right-hand turn lane in, but I'm, you know...
Yeah, I don't think the light goes to TSB project, no.
But if you were going to do something based on the spacing, you know, all your traffic is coming via Fifth and Airport, but yet due to signal spacing, no, but it can't be done. It can't be done.
That's probably the cheapest school average we're talking about.
Yeah.
So I can appreciate from the student's perspective, that's the only time they're there, so we're there, but it's balled up.
Like I said, I'm a, I go through there daily. I work in McDonald's, and I live behind the high school, so it's, I try to avoid Fifth and Airport, the intersection there, so I actually take that street on Fifth, off of Fifth before, for Airport, J Street, yeah. I just go there and take it second to the line.
Beating it, as much as you're going.
That's what I do, too.
Well, I know Fifth and, is, I've had three complaints this year on that particular intersection, and so I've made a point to have some presence there during, anytime of, there's a game at the high school, the commute time from Albany to Corvallis, back and forth, and it is, I see many, many people take a risk to get in the traffic, or get out of the traffic, or get across, and I think we need to at least, I don't know what a line is, so how much that helps that, Ron?
Uh, it pretty much doesn't help Fifth and Airport. It may a little bit, because what ends up happening is you end up with a stoppage there on Airport Road traffic, so it allows a little more clearance of your Fifth Street.
Because after a football game, a track meet, even if it's not commute time traffic, it's pretty hairy.
Yeah, I agree. Whether it meets warrants or not, like I said, I don't know if it would. The only way we know is through the traffic study, or you could opt to...
But it doesn't have to be warrants.
Nope.
What's the cost involved in traffic study for us?
It depends on how elaborate we went. The last one we did, the Albany Development Drive, and we haven't paid for them, so...
Will they have posted 700,000?
Yeah, 750,000. No, you'd pay probably $3,000,000 for the counts themselves, you have independent company committed to counts, and if somebody had to write a report and stamp it, I don't know, guessing, I'm guessing here 15,000 to 20,000.
It's been 10 years, do you think it's worth, do you want another study, or...
Well, that's a good question. You don't know, and so you do it. It depends on, it depends on what outcome you want to come out. If you're thinking that based on this PMP and AMP, that you definitely need to program the signal for that intersection, then I would say, yeah, go ahead and do that.
If you're not going to put a signal in, what are you going to say for it?
Yeah.
Would it be, would it wrap the number of times up?
Okay, that's my, another question when it comes to traffic says, you know, on a deal like this, you know, it's not development-driven, you know, is there any way to do a quick in-house thumbnail, not official study, but to say, yeah, we, you know, we've got out there, and we've checked, and we don't see stacking more than six cars, or whatever.
Turn lane counts.
So I think you do a quick count, say, okay, this is about what we're seeing, understanding it's not some official study, but it's also not $20,000. And that will be some thumbnail, I don't know.
You're right, you're right, it's a speed line.
Yeah.
We could definitely look at that, if something counts in mind.
And the signal cost is?
Yeah, you know, you're looking at, you're looking at street improvements, you're looking at, the last one we did was upwards of 250, so I'm guessing by the time you get a consultant involved, you're way north of 300.
Not, not even being sure it would work in that area, because of the...
You just have to tie the signals together.
And that gets back to, probably really, if you want the total answer, hiring a consultant and paying the money.
Yeah.
Because this is complicated, it's not just a single intersection where, you know, we put some things in the road, do counts, and, oh yeah, we know, we got this, or we got that.
And that's...
Because of that connection, yeah, between Fifth and Seventh.
We could go out and look, basically what I would do if I did it, I'd go out and I'd do counts, and I'd compare them to what counts were, and see what, you know, where this study was, and I'd say, wow, this is kind of what we...
It's pretty close to what we had before, it's not worth a study.
Yeah.
It makes sense, I know.
And you're probably going to see more traffic, but I really have a way of measuring what that, what level closes, without having somebody that's does it every day.
Well, also, just the basic concept of stopping traffic on Airport Road, or that's your, probably your major arterial in town.
Yes.
And, you know, the more you restrict that, the more you're going to call, you know, cobbles and stuff, so...
Yeah, that'll have some...
And all the rivers, so you've got to kind of figure all that in mind, that's when the consultant comes in.
Yes, exactly.
So we have a consensus...
There's a policeman out there in the middle of the street telling him which way to be.
So we have a consensus, and we'd like Ron to get back with us with a little bit more of a report.
I could do whatever, whatever you guys would, what would you like to see, basically some counts, see if they're relative...
I guess what I'd like to hear from you is just your intuition or take on this warrant warrant study.
Okay.
You know, without doing a huge amount of work.
How do we get a side rear, if we want to go further with it?
I'd probably keep it as, you know, the minimum we can do, and say, yeah, it's probably about what it was, or we realized it, or, you know, without going along with it.
We'll do some more than that.
Thank you, Ron.
Yep.
Thank you, James.
It was a very considerate...
Thank you for your coming.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, could I interject here?
Sure.
One of our constituents who watched a tape meeting, which was one of the people doing that, mentioned that, and I asked, could you hear the chief? Because I noticed last meeting, he was kind of leaning back and kind of over, and she said, no. So that's probably true of all the information that Ron just shared.
We need to have a mic.
Yeah. Could, somehow could we release better what is being filmed, if it's being heard?
Sure, and there's, we're working on getting sound directly from the microphones into there, but that won't help if there's someone with no microphone. So we need probably get, can we get maybe a second microphone on that other seat there, so that way we have two people talking?
Well, even us with mics, sometimes we shift into that.
Or we forget to turn the...
Yes. Yeah, that's good, good. So councillors, please speak up. And Gigi?
I'm going to try.
Thank you. Rebecca, I don't think we have a problem.
No one's complaining about that.
Okay. We'll be on to our regular session. The first thing on the agenda is the award bid for the West Side Interceptor Phase Four Project Number 11710, presented by the Hallmark. presented by the Hallmark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, um, as suspected, we got really good bids for this project, actually better than what I thought we would. If you look at the prices, we had thirteen bidders, um, we opened the bids, everybody checked out, Pacific Excavation was a little bit, they presented a little bit, uh, we've worked with them a lot. They're anxious to get started, one of the things we will be doing, assuming that you're okay with awarding the project, uh, we're going to have a neighborhood meeting scheduled for April second to go over all the details of the project, road closures, everything else with the neighborhood out there, uh, we schedule that for April second at the library, and we'll be sitting out notice of that, and get people up to speed, and what to expect, and how much we're going to disrupt their lives this summer, and we'll, we'll try and make this painless as possible, although that could be difficult. So, with that, we're recommending that we award the project to Pacific Excavation for one point eight five million, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Have we worked with these people before, Ron?
Yeah, lots of times, yeah, yeah.
So we're pretty pleased, but.
Yeah, I, um, I was hoping that they would get it, actually, so, yeah.
Do you know why your bid was so low compared to everybody else's?
Well, I don't, ah, I went through it, and I, I, I worked with Spencer, I actually worked with Spencer, who's their, ah, Vice President, prior to bidding, oh, a couple of months ago, and was actually asking him some of the bid prices, you know, and what do you think things are going for, and, ah, the prices he told me then were definitely not what they did now, which is not typically, it's, that, that happens, you know, um, some of the prices, um, I asked him about, and I didn't believe they'd take due for that, but they're comfortable with it, and that seems to be their standard right now. I mean, they're, they dropped their profit margin, they don't have to pay overhead, and they're funneling a lot of money to their companies, so.
You got, you got two others that are fairly close there, so they're not that far apart.
Yeah, and you can see, I mean, where our estimate was, I mean, we basically take averages, all this stuff, and, uh, we're not trying to win the bid, but, uh, you know, I look back at our averages, and, and I did a comparison, and we're, we're getting stuff cheaper yet than what we were giving it last year, so I'm not sure how we estimate for that. It's good for us, it's good for the city, um, but, you know, we're comfortable with who they are, and, um, I'm sure they'll do a great job for us.
Any other questions?
I would move to work the contract for project number one one seven one ten to Pacific Excavation Incorporated.
It's been moved and seconded to work the contract for West Side Interceptor Base Four, project number one one seven one zero. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass the two. Thank you, Ron. And thank you for number two.
Yeah, just stay here.
And this is an award bid for Filbert Jennings Street Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project number one two seven zero five. Ron?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, um, you can see that we've got nine bids for this project, again, with bid prices. This is for the Jennings and, uh, Filbert Street Sewer Project, uh, we were a little more in the middle on our estimate with this one, which is where we expect to be, um, it was, uh, we're recommending that we award it to R.J. Armstrong, uh, the local contractor, and, uh, again, a great company to work with, uh, they were extremely low. Um, I've talked to Bob Armstrong a couple times on the phone, he's comfortable with a bid, uh, he said it was going to go real fast, so I, I'm comfortable with him saying that. Uh, one, one item, uh, that I would like a little clarification from the City Council, we sent out a memo, I believe John sent out a memo about the twentieth of February, I think is what that did, if you're asking for, um, one, Councilor Reese Camp had a question in regards to how, on Jennings Street, how we were going to help the property owners, if there was anything we could do to help the property owners, uh, since they were having to redirect their sewers. Uh, since that time, I've had two property owners that actually asked me that request, so I put a memo together, um, and it was sent out to the council, and if there's something that the council wants to do that's different than what we do normally, uh, we're definitely open to that, I gave a couple of options, um, I guess I'm just looking for a little direction for what can be standard.
Did we respond, I feel like I responded to that.
I, I never got anything on that.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to remember, you responded to me, I'm trying to remember.
Okay.
I think there were a couple of other councillors that did as well.
Okay.
Um, and I think that those that responded wanted to pay for the whole thing, which may be a little uncomfortable, only because we took the windows to them, and for, for going down the middle of the street, we pay, uh, to the, you know, to the, in the right of way.
Yes.
Now, obviously, their case is somewhat special, uh, so, because of the lines that's in their backyard, they had to go so far to reach the sewer main. So your other option, one was for us to pay everything, but what was the other one, Ron?
Uh, I think option one was, city pays for entire ladder, basically, to the house, so.
To the house, oh, yeah.
We wouldn't go in, I go to plumber to actually turn the plumbing around, or whatever they had to do, if they could come around from the backside, whatever that, whatever that option is, we would get it up to the house, which, uh, cuts off twenty more feet, maybe, in, in these cases. Uh, the other option I had was to, uh, let's see, I don't remember what the options were to have, um, we could redirect the line under the house, but in that option, the property owner then has to, uh, they have to be able and willing to, because if we don't want them to redirect it up the house, and we've got a gap in our sewer underground. So, um, I, I'm not sure how that option would work, obviously, we'd have to look into that. Or we can stick with our, our standard of putting it up to the curb and the property, that's what our ordinance is now, that's, that's what we do now. But, again, this is a tip.
I just felt like we, we should do a little bit more beyond, because we're, I mean, these are extraordinary circumstances, we're going to really redirect beyond because of our decision to, to relocate that line.
So Ron, what's your estimate for you to take it to the house?
If we took it to the house, maybe another twenty-five to thirty-five thousand, and, you know, that was before our new bid crisis, so I think that that's going to be, that's going to be quite a bit less than that.
You're saying, you say take it to the house, we do the job, complete, done.
Um.
Or just take it up to the house?
No, I think I would take it up to the house, uh, well, no, in, in that, in that cost, I, I said redirect and do the whole thing.
So if I take it up, it's going to be turnkey.
And that's, that's, that's my guess, I would, I would definitely have to get, get, uh, an idea from a plumber, what it would take, and each, each house is going to be, going to be different.
Sure.
The other thing, we could just take it up to the house, leave it there, and then when the property owner wanted to hook up, they could, they could come in and do that.
What about the possibility of, I mean, given the nature of this thing, you know, it's more plumbing that's typically involved, if you had a single plumber contractor going to do the whole thing, they've probably got some efficiency to scale.
Which is what I would, I would recommend, yeah.
And can we estimate what a typical, in, in, any normal project, the cost to homeowner would be to do the hookup, and maybe charge them to have them out, like a cost to everybody, and, and, you know, share a cost to a normal hookup, and, and then just turn around and do the whole project, and that way, it's done, it's done right.
Yes, we, we could do that, um, my caution on that is, we're actually taking people that currently have been working from a sewer, and we're telling them, guess what, you now have twelve hundred dollars to do that, and I, I see exactly where you're coming from, so my, my recommendation would be, we either take it to a stopping point and have the homeowner finish it off, or we actually take the whole thing on. I mean, we can go the other route, but that's going to require us to, one, ensure that the property owner can actually pay that cost, because somebody will, somebody will have to pay that cost, um, or, or we, who would take it and do it all?
I guess I don't see the difference, because if we take it to the house and leave it there, then they're stuck with the cost whether they can pay for it or not.
Correct.
And they haven't the sewer at all.
They could do it five years from now.
So we're not abandoning the sewer back?
No, no.
And if it fails, then they're stuck with it?
Yes.
All right, okay, I was, in my head, I was thinking we're abandoning one.
Yeah, no, we're, we're, we're not going to abandon it, we don't even own it, uh, it's, it's not even, it doesn't show up anywhere on the records. So, we're going to leave that intact, and the whole point of this one is just to make sure that we have, uh, something for them to hook onto in the future. Uh, we can see this coming, there's been several people that have had issues with it. I just had a couple of the residents, and then also Councilor Reese Camp, last, last council meeting, asked a question, how would we deal with that? And I'm agreeing before you, uh, see if there's something more we want to do, what that is, I don't know what it is.
How, how many houses are we talking about?
Five or six.
Five.
Yeah.
Ron, is there really any opposition to us just bringing it up to the house?
I don't think anybody would care, uh, that we did that. About seven, seven percent, uh, and, you know, we've, we've got two on the other side, but, um, they currently don't have, the, the two don't have city service right now, so I, I wouldn't recommend doing any of that. But the ones that do currently have sewer service and are paying for sewer services is basically what I was making.
If, if, if we did it all, you're saying that it would be somewhere in the twenty-five thousand dollar range?
That's, that's my guess, you know, I mean, unless we get under somebody's house, and, I mean, or we was on the rest of that, but, yeah, I can't see it being a whole lot more than that, they're pretty short on our runs, um, you know, I would, uh, I would say that if, if we do it that way, we have more control, or we can hire, uh, an individual plumber or contractor, probably what I would recommend is we change order to our existing contract, and he hires an actual plumber to go in and do that, and he can give estimates on what it would take for each house, uh, to do that.
But what I'm noticing is that we add twenty-five thousand dollars to the low bid, we're still below the next lowest.
Yes, yes, we, we have, we have, the funding is, the funding is not an issue, we'd be fine.
I agree.
I think I'm on the same line as Floyd here, uh, we've got, the difference between the low bid and the, your estimate is close to sixty thousand.
Yeah.
So we've got some money to play with there, the way I said, I'd like to see us go clear to the house.
What other areas have this problem? Okay, what I, what I worry about is we do this for these seven homes, and you turn around, we've got a set of president, and there's a street with fifty homes on it, and we're going to have fifty angry homeowners going to be saying, why them, not me? So are, are there other areas like this that?
I'd tell you no, but I don't know.
Why don't we do something like just?
Most likely yes.
I mean, I, I don't know.
Are there going to be fifty on it?
But probably not.
Why, why don't we just do something like, uh, take them up to the house for no hookup, but tell the homeowner, we'll do the hookup for a thousand bucks if you do it now and pay for it.
Uh, that's an option.
Yeah.
If they don't look it up, then it's their baby, but, uh, if they want it for a thousand bucks, we'll take care of it, have it done.
I like that, because it gives them the option, I, I can do it now, and it'll be cheaper, the city can, the city is, is, is at least making some sort of effort to, to make up for the fact that this is kind of, we're kind of forcing this on them, even though it's in their own business.
And we don't, we, set a precedent of just doing everything.
Right.
What, what if, what if we actually had a plumber, I had a plumber come out and look at that and see what that actual cost would be?
Yeah, that's fair.
And then, uh, prior to doing that, maybe at the next council meeting, bring it back to change order, so you might get, take a look at that.
A thousand is not critical, we have to strict the number, but yeah.
Okay.
What's your timeline on this, too, because if we pop this on them, well, we need a thousand dollars, and for some people, a thousand dollars is.
Well, that's, that's the whole point of asking them, that's, that's their choice, they can figure out how to deal with that.
Well, sure, if we're saying, yeah, we'd like to start in a week and a half, so give me your decision.
Sure.
And then give a little more.
Right.
For a little time.
They were talking about the first week in April, starting.
Oh.
So, yeah, it's, um.
But we could also give that time to pay, because it doesn't say we have to have that plan.
That's true.
That's true.
We know where they live.
We know the sewer.
Um, is that something we'd be interested in doing?
I mean, and, and I think that's a very reasonable course of action. I like that.
So, the plan is to?
Get a bid and come back with a change order?
Okay, and, and have them hook that up, and then decide at what point we want to tell the property owners.
How much they need to share.
Okay, I can definitely do that, okay?
If they want to look out, they don't want to look out, because it's staying at.
And if they can't at that point, then, yeah, at least we've made an option.
Probably will happen at most of those homes, it's when they're sold, new buyer comes along, new buyer will have to hook it up. If, if they do any kind of thorough investigation, you know, inspection.
Right. Okay.
Yes, we'll vote on that when we bring that back?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you'll, uh, award this, though?
Oh, okay, so we do need to, we'll look first.
Yeah, I'll just bring, I'll bring you the change order back.
Okay, I was just checking.
Okay, here, I'm, I'm making motion that we approve this award.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the award of the Filbert Jennings Street Sanitary Replacement, project number one two seven zero five, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And number three is the Real Property Update, three oh five Mary Street, Dean Paul, what's that been?
Whoa. I'm here to bring some good news, and I'm not spending any money, so. So, back in September, um, I came to, we worked with the attorney on three oh five Mary Street, our home enforcement officer, there was a home there that was pretty well, it needed to be torn down, property owner should not afford to do it, so we worked with the property owner, we're Mr. Lowmark, we signed an agreement with him, he basically deeded the property over to the city, he went in and, I guess, used his own equipment, tore the building down, we provided all the downstairs, so we put a lot of cost into tearing this down. What we did is we gave him, uh, the option to repurchase, repurchase the property for one year, auction, back up. The property was going to be, is being foreclosed on by the county, he hadn't paid property taxes in a, a number of years, because it was a dilapidated house, so we went in, we bought the property taxes current, he tore the house down, we hauled it big up, we had about eight thousand dollars in the property, we gave him one year to re, uh, buy the property back, or it became property to the city, we would maintain the deed. He came to us the end of February, had a buyer, paid the city in full, we deeded the property back over, and they're supposedly going to be building a new house and put that back in the property tax rules, so. That process worked out real good, the attorney, we worked with them a lot, and get us all signed up, it was a real good process, it was real smooth, so. We've been bringing back and update you guys on that, but that's, and then they worked the way they hoped it worked.
We did.
So.
Excellent. It's too bad you can't do the same thing with that house next to it. That is something else.
But I will say, it's too bad he bought it back, because he stole it, he still had a pretty problem with the property, I, I saw the title deed.
Yeah.
He wanted to sell it and give up on the eight thousand, and, and he bought all the back taxes up, so it's, it's pretty clean out. Any questions?
No.
Stay with me. Okay, uh, I have a former city manager's report, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm the City Council, I see a, I'm making a mistake. Update, it should be up for our thirteen, fourteen budget, uh, that budgeting process is well underway, uh, we actually have, uh, all our estimates done year to end, as well as a preliminary budget forecast. Dean and his staff have been working very hard, um, and therefore, as long as no of the council is objected, I'm not particularly in line with the fact that, uh, I'm generally working something less than full time, but I'd ask Dean to fill in as the budget officer, budget official for the city, that doesn't mean I won't be involved, I'll still be very much involved, um, but it just means that we have someone here that can take care of the more minor budget issues or problems or questions that may come up, uh, I'll still be involved in the overall department budgets, of course, and still very much if it's a more major decision, in fact, we've already made several major decisions along with the department manager, but I'll still be very much involved in more significant decision budget making. I've already talked to Dean about that, he's agreeable to it, so just thought I would let you know that that was my plan of doing that, uh, and that, um, we are probably, as far as where we stand, we're probably, and maybe Dean, you can chip, chip in here, but I think we're probably pretty close to where we usually are at this point, before we, you know, get out the axe and try to put up some more, and start, you know, hopefully just getting the fat, but, you know, sometimes it's hard to employ a little muscle, too, but, so, anyway, but we'll, we'll get it balanced and retain our, our reserve funds, and do the necessary steps to make sure that it's, uh, it's a budget that the city can live with and, and make good progress with. Audit Committee, I think Dean, beeping to the punch, you already sent out that information, correct?
I didn't send it to all the council, I sent it out to you and the Audit Committee.
Okay, so would you, why don't you come up, uh, and let them know who, uh, the Audit Committee made a recommendation, and I think a decision's, uh, tentatively been made, correct?
Well, we're.
Or at least it's going to come to them.
So, so the Audit Committee met, and it was, I think the mayor will agree that it was a pretty good, pretty good meeting, we, there were four of them. So they came down to two companies that they want to talk to. The mayor and I met last Thursday. And we made phone calls to the two companies and two references for each company. I think what you'll find is when we started, the mayor was leaning one way. When we were done talking to the, all the references, he goes that way. He completely switched after talking to references. So it was a real good process. Who we came down to, we would like to, I'm working now with the company Acuity, they're a company out of Albany. They're, so we're on their contract now and they're, we're both at that, that, and back to you guys for the April 10th meeting. So they can get ready for the audit this spring or this summer.
So this will be new audit, your own firm?
So we're fifteen auditors after 20 years.
Twenty some years, so...
This will be interesting to get some new eyes on what's going on.
So that'd be a good thing. And I want to thank the audit committee, Dean and the mayor, the audit committee for their hard work and get, well, putting out the RFPs and reviewing them. I think making them, what I feel is a very good recommendation.
All four people on the audit committee had some really good questions as we went through it and so it was a good process.
For those of you who weren't on that committee, I believe there were probably four, four people, but I think there were four companies that applied.
Yeah, we had four companies who applied.
And they applied. And after quite a conversation and looking at particulars and things that individuals do about different companies, I think we had four decent applications and this one, I think, stood out. So I think it's a good decision and I think we'll all benefit as a city.
Yes, it is. Close to home too.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that was one of the issues that we were looking at, is the one company that we were looking at was up in Tiger, Tiger.
Along with the second, the second.
We were a little concerned about the distance and, you know, some of the reference we talked to, that was an issue. But some of the details of how this company is gonna work with us was a lot better. And some of the references wasn't as excited about the company as Tiger. So we, I think we've got a really good choice. I'm really happy with this group. It's a smaller company, I think we'll get a lot more personal attention.
Good job, Audit Committee.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
Okay, thank you. Interim city manager, I need to be gone for about three weeks in May. So I did know the council, they're, of course, you're only paying me when I'm here, on an hourly basis, so the money would be available to, I do know an individual retired city manager who worked in several Oregon cities for many years, a very sharp guy, good guy, that could come in and fill in as interim in my absence. Or I could simply appoint an existing department manager or head to fill in in my absence. So I bring that, I'm willing to take care of it myself, but I just wanted to make sure you were all aware of that and have an opportunity to make, you know, make the decision yourself now if you wish, or think about it and you may input later. As I said, this is not gonna happen until May, roughly, I think, we're due to May 11th, so...
Maybe you just check with some of the department managers and give back to us.
Okay.
Next month, let us know.
Okay.
Who'll be available.
Okay, all right. And miscellaneous, I was at a very interesting meeting over lunch today with a variety of local area officials. And I probably shouldn't indicate all of what was discussed, because I believe some of it was confidential. But what can be, I think, stated publicly is that Samaritan Health Services indicated that their hotel project has actually grown somewhat in scope. They do anticipate breaking ground this year, along with a standalone preference center, along with a standalone restaurant. All total, you know, probably 14, 15, 16 million dollar project. So that would be very good news, once that starts growing, so... And there's a lot of other things that was discussed at this meeting about potential projects or activities or medical training programs and businesses that I think, again, the momentum is building there. More and more folks around the state are hearing about what's going on out there. They're getting more and more familiar with Comp Northwest. And more and more people are interested in partnering with us to enhance medical, educational and research opportunities in that area. So, you know, these things happen overnight, of course they won't. But I think particularly if the economy continues to grow and not regress back to where it was three, four years ago, I think we'll see a pretty interesting and pretty exciting development out there over the course of the next two to five years, starting with the hotel.
This may seem like a stupid question, but I can be very stupid. The, if the hospital builds a hotel and a restaurant, and those are for-profit entities, but they're owned by a nonprofit, will they pay property taxes?
You might have to go back and look at the agreement. I think the agreement, it would be the same as what Land County would view it. And Land County would view those as taxable activities, even though they were owned by a nonprofit. So they would pay taxes, yes.
I'm not sure how that's gonna be structured. We'll have to find out as the, the negotiations with Samaritan and their partners goes forward. But it may turn out to be something like a private entity that simply leases ground from Samaritan. I'm not sure what the structure will be, but...
The Samaritan has talked about running it themselves.
And like I said, I'm not sure any of those details are 100% finalized, so...
I think it also depends on whether it's a full hotel or part of that is housing for students. Because I know they talked about that a couple of...
At this point, they're not planning on housing their students. And the last thing I have is we've adopted, City adopted policies several months ago, trying not to charge, or at least only charging very minimally when we get public records requests. And we got one, you have, it's rather voluminous one. There it is, and that doesn't include the attachments. And Lynn, I think you were telling me about six hours of span to get this far. I mean, Brenton and...
Four.
Four, four hours to get this far.
That's not counting trace.
Yeah, trace, maybe time.
Just glancing through them, I mean, it, what it is, it's a fairly substantial request on emails.
Email, right.
And looking through them, there's gonna be a number that we're going to, I'm not going to go through every one because there's a number of issues, there's personnel issues, you know, regarding Chief Silverman and working with, you know, various other employees underneath him. There's some that are ongoing criminal investigations that will need to be pulled. And then frankly, there's some minimal, probably attorney-client privileged stuff. And I didn't realize, is this 2,500 pages? Do you have that?
It's over $600 worth to the taxpayers.
So, I mean, I think maybe it was, it was Lynn and I kind of wanted to bring this in front of the council as to, you know, we appreciate the nice editorial that Lynn expressed today about not charging for public records requests. And I think that we want to continue to do that to the extent that, you know, we can do that. We can email someone, put it up on our Facebook page, and you know, that stuff can happen pretty quickly. But I guess what, you know, it's not my money, it's the city's money. And you all represent the city, so I guess we could use some guidance on, on what we should do with these types of requests and whether we should attempt to recoup the cost that's associated with it.
My first question on that would be, what's the, how many of these do we get in a year? What's, how many record requests do we get and what's a typical cost? I mean, we're talking, is this an outlier, is this the first time this happened in 10 years? Or...
And the, and the, and the number of requests that we are getting has increased steadily. I might even want to argue if that was gonna be a little bit excitable exponentially, that's not really true. But certainly significantly increased, minus two, three years. So would you say it would be a number that you could increase of any?
Well, I did, I believe I emailed all of the council a week ago or two weeks ago. You know, time's flying by. And I did get four requests just in that one week, so...
Are these requests that take five minutes or five hours or...
All over the map, pretty much, yeah.
It all depends on how specific they are.
Sure. I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get a sense of how much of an impact this is having on our staff.
The question is a lot, there are some requests that we want, you know, this document and we go get it and give it to them. That's not a problem.
Usually those type of documents with our, our website are usually already available. So these kinds of requests usually take an hour of formal staff time. So requests saying, I want every email between so-and-so and so-and-so regarding such and such. That's what this is. Just that alone for Brent's time, the S managers, no one who can do that. So that was an hour and a half of his time at his salary rate. And then it amounted to that whole box of pages. So it was over $600 just in the paper and the copy of costs.
What they did, they did attempt to, to narrow the search, but it just turned out, even with the narrowed search, it turned out to be this.
But the, the obviously two competing interests are, one, good public service. And two, you know, fee for service.
Yes, so, yes.
So that's the two sides of the equation. And I guess what I would do is probably rely on staff to present to us proposals, how they think they'll handle it. The ones that have a better handle on what kind of effort they're spending. And, you know, it might be, say, we'll spend up to 10 minutes for three or whatever, I mean, pick some scale.
Do we not charge the media? Is that, is that our policy?
We haven't.
I haven't been, no.
There's an exception for requests where they request fees to be waived in the public interest. And that's fairly subjective standard, obviously.
So if, if...
And if I have something electronically, I will not charge.
Yeah, we never charge for that. Joe Hullett walked in and wanted the same thing.
Whether it was the press or the media, or, excuse me, the media or Joe off the street, I don't charge for anything that I can supply that like this.
But this?
But that I would, they would be charged over $600 for that.
Even though it has whatever key phrase, with the public interest?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, if everything in here is within the public interest, then everything in the city is in the public interest. The range is from, you know, extremely mundane to...
Yes.
I looked in there and there was, you know, there was an email advertising the Boys and Girls' Bill option, you know.
So I mean, I want to, I want to work with the media.
Yeah.
And I want to, I want to facilitate them being able to put a product out in time and manner and understand the information. I just don't know where to go, but...
Well, there's several...
Yeah, you wish.
The media on one hand is a for-profit company that charges for their services. And, you know, every other company that has to manufacture a product, has to buy the materials and, you know, that's one way of looking at it.
And maybe, you know, something like this, and again, maybe staff can go over a recommendation. And when we have this volume, maybe we could come up with a discounted fee where it's not full, it's half, maybe. Something where we're at least getting something for the amount of staff that we're putting down, because it is substantial. It's a lot of money.
If you have a, at some level, if you have a request that requires that much work and staff time, and if you have a dog in the fight, some sort of, that it takes some sort of investment, I think it prevents you from just frivolously asking for, I want, well, I want to see everything John's ever sent to Rebecca. Well, you know, because if any citizen can just, if anybody can just ask for the sake of asking, I think you're right, if it's, if it's a really simple request, absolutely, we should always bend over backwards. And I think it is different with media.
And we do.
And, and, and I, and I'm glad to remember that we, that we treat that different. Because I, because they do serve a different interest than just some, a disgruntled guy who just starts demanding more and more and more to see things, to satisfy his own, you know, you know, he should work closely with the counselor or with, you know, in some other way than to, than to just... Any, any citizen then could ask unlimited time of yours for, just for their own...
Well, just that we don't charge for anything under like five or 10 minutes worth of effort. Anything over that, we charge by the hour.
Yeah, I agree. I think staff could come back with some kind of tiered fee structure over a minimum amount of time.
Previously, it was brought before council and it was decided that we would be charging what it costs the taxpayers to perform. So the staff time, the product, if you're providing a disk, how much would it cost for the disk? Or a flash drive? And that's what we've always charged before. And then we started really being a little bit more lenient or forgiving of those fees for the press. Because we're trying to build that relationship. But it is, it is hard because we, and we understand they're on a timeline. But we also are on a lot of other projects. And so we can't always get it to them at the time that they requested it. So it's pretty difficult. Well, not, not when they're at this point.
That's right.
I think there's, you know, I think we want to be as prompt as we can with the press and give them the information and allow them to, you know, do the stories.
Exactly.
But I think realistically, they have to have some timeline that we can beat and some cost related to something like this, but that's, I think, ridiculous.
What do you guess your time would be to go through that box?
I used to do estimates when we do privileged reviews for like document production and litigation. And we would always estimate at about an hour for every 50 pages. But it's not that much for the kind of review I do here there. You know, you're getting paid for every line and make sure it doesn't slip in there inside of something that would be privileged that you couldn't produce. You know, some of these, you can, you know, as soon as you see the regards line, you can say, yeah, that's pretty slanty. So I mean, for this, I would say sitting down and going through this, and again, this isn't even all the attachments to the emails.
We didn't, yeah, he didn't have time to print out all the attachments.
I mean, I'm looking at probably five to seven hours.
Yeah, we know you're really cheap per hour, so...
Yeah.
In order to allow you to...
I am on a retainer, so it's not gonna cost you this year, but when I come back next year for my new contract, that's gonna...
But if you receive a certain amount of hours, we'll pay you additionally.
No.
Okay.
But next year, I'll ask for more.
Yeah.
Sounds to me like we need to come up with a scale.
And do you see a tiered scale? I mean, I mean, obviously we have a scale for just regular requests, you know, some of the other street, and you know, that, do we want a press-related scale?
I think I would just keep it simple and say it's one scale and I would have you a free scale at the front end and then charged by the cost after that to whoever, that was, you know...
I think here's what I recommend, maybe Lynn and I can get together and make a recommendation. I think we also need to discuss, and I think you need to discuss with the council, what, what it means by in the public interest. Because that is a consideration as, as, you know, for, for the, for the press. And maybe there's some recent, I had a look at this recently, maybe there's some recent decisions by the Attorney General or something like that, that really defines what's in the public interest for purposes of the public records law. And maybe I can bring that back along with a recommendation to the council for the document policy.
That would be good, because I, I don't think there, I don't think it should be one flat scale. I think the press, what they do is they take this information, and not as an individual, and they then broadcast it on the internet, through the newspaper, on Twitter feeds. And they push that out there, thereby satisfying the needs of many people who have that same interest. So I do, I understand, yes, they're for profit, and yes, they, they generate revenue based on the juiciness of their story and the information that Adel will put in there. But at the same time, there are a lot of people out there with those same questions who have them answered. And then instead of coming in and saying, Ms. Kizer, I'd like to put, I'd like to know what this is. And now we have multiple people coming in, the press takes care of that for us. So to some extent, they work at, at our behalf, sometimes. Sometimes. So I think, I mean, to be fair, they should get a bit of a discount or a lesser rate because they're gonna satisfy a greater need publicly. Does that make sense?
Oh, perfectly. I also think there's a bit of a sticking point as far as what's really a public record and what's really questions for staff or council. And so I, I think a lot of what they really want are probably just some answers to some questions. And so if we had a certain person to go to, I think that would be helpful. I'd also like to suggest bringing back my form, which is also online. It explains the fees that we currently have. You can maybe review that and see if you want to change it at all. I do think personally, my own personal belief is that the press shouldn't be charged the same.
Well, I mean, we do have...
For the reasons you said.
Yes, yeah.
That could be something, maybe we just sit down with everybody and, I think, Audrey and Alex.
And maybe we just start getting more stuff out on our Facebook account and...
And we're not, we're not unique in, in any way.
a, 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 a,